Okay, 119 members being present. We have a total of 235 members. We have a quorum, and this town meeting is now in order. I call upon all town meeting members and members of the public, anyone else present, who so desires to please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, I'll call upon Town Clerk Amy -- oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Please, moderators, please return their attendance, first attendance sheets. At this time, the Town Clerk will swear in any new members who weren't sworn in at the annual town meeting.
I'll just have you stand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a town meeting member in accordance with the bylaws of the town of Milford and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so help you God? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just want to review some of the instructions for the meeting. Who can speak at town meeting? And that is town meeting members and registered voters of the town of Milford. Anyone else wishing to address this body needs unanimous consent of the town meeting members. If you want to be recognized to speak, just stand in place and wave your hand and exclaim, Mr. Moderator, and I will recognize you. And then the people online, excuse me, people, members participating remotely, you please use the hand icon to be recognized, and then Mr. George will prompt me as to whether, when you want to be recognized. When you come up here to speak, please state your name and your precinct number, or if you're a registered voter or not a registered voter, please state your address as well so we can verify if you are a registered voter. Only town meeting members can make motions and can vote on the motions. Any main motions and amendments must be in writing. There are time limits to debate. Sponsors are allowed 10 minutes to make a presentation. If they need an additional 10 minutes, requires a two-thirds vote. Other individuals addressing town meeting are allowed five minutes the first time. Any subsequent times they wish to speak, they're limited to three minutes and three in number. Anything exceeding that requires a two-thirds vote. And anybody asking, when the sponsor responds, excuse me, when a sponsor responds to a question that does not count as an occurrence of speaking. We'll do the same process we used the last town meeting. For the voice vote, we'll ask the members participating remotely to vote first, yes or no. We'll wait about 20 seconds, then I will take the voice vote. And when we do a standing vote, I will just have them vote first and then go right into the standing vote. If anybody has a question for a sponsor or a town official, please, you can ask a question, but make sure you direct it to an individual. Don't get up here and just make a, ask a question, then it may or may not be answered. And the town officials or the sponsors should answer the questions to the best of their ability. If they don't have an answer, they should just say, "I don't have an answer," to that question. So this time, I'll call upon Town Clerk Amy Hennessy Neves, who will read the opening of the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is the special town meeting, October 24th, 2022, Milford, Massachusetts, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County. To either Constable of the town of Milford and said county, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of four said, you are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Milford, qualified by law to vote in town affairs, to meet in the upper hall of the Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street, on the 24th day of October 2022 A.D., at 7:00 P.M. In accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 10, a special town meeting shall be held in Milford's Upper Town Hall. For those seeking reasonable accommodations under the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, due to incapacity or disability who provide sufficient proof of such condition and who pre-register for the special town meeting at individual locations selected by such members at the time of their pre-registration, as part of the reasonable accommodation process, remote participation may be permitted. Instructions for those seeking reasonable accommodations to register to participate at other locations shall be provided by the Town Clerk. The special town meeting will then and there act upon the following articles. Article 1.
If no member objects, we will dispense with the meeting of the articles. Does any member object? Okay, we'll dispense with the reading of the articles. If, Mrs. Neves, will please continue with the officer's return of service.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Worcester County, Milford, Massachusetts, date October 3rd, 2022. Pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified the inhabitants of the town of Milford to meet at the time and place for the purpose within mentioned by posting attested copies of this warrant in 10 or more public places in Milford. Mark Calzaloya, Constable. Thank you.
Thank you. Does, are there any reports? Mr. Correa from the Finance Committee?
I could try and use the excuse that I'm trying to make this fast, but the truth is, I didn't get my report to our IT department fast enough. So tomorrow morning, it will be posted on the website, so you can have it. We start on a good note. The year is going well. I mean, for everybody who's noticed, and we'll talk about it tonight, we had a $7 million excess free cash, or free cash, which is not free, last year. We approved 143, almost 144 million dollars of expenses. And now it looks like we're on track to bring in 147 million of revenue. So here we are, four months in, and it looks like we're going to be to the good over $3 million at least. So my hat's off once again to our department heads for treating our money as if it was theirs. Now, a lot of people ask the question, why every year do we have $3 million surplus? Because it's been that way for years and years, except the years we had more. The thing to remember is our total right now is 147 million dollars. If we hit 97% efficiency, that means we're predicting next year, that means we're going to end up between $3 and $4 million surplus. We're always a little worried to budget any closer than that, because God help us, we have a year, and this could have been the year with expenses going crazy. We're going to talk about a couple of things that, two months ago, we budgeted one number to bring to you, and all of a sudden, it's up $50,000 for a particular piece of highway equipment. So 97% was always a good grade at Milford High, and I'd say we want to stay that way. We don't want to go any tighter, because if the year comes where we don't have these surpluses, you hate to go back to a department with almost no time left in the year and tell them to cut. Couple of the highlights. General Government is staying at about 4%. Public Safety at about 9% of our budget. You know, you start looking at $13 million that we're putting into public safety. When you look at the published data for education, the numbers aren't easy to understand, because if you look at the budget, it's 43% at $64 million. But that does not count the benefits, like health insurance, which are 9.6 million additional. It doesn't count the debt service, which is $3 million additional. So overall, you're looking at $76 million that we're investing in our children. A lot of money. It is down as a percentage. The state targeted three areas last year, and when the school committee came and said they needed $6 million extra dollars, my heart stopped. But it turns out, the state, thank you, Mr. Murray and friends, voted to focus in on school districts like Milford that had, number one, a large portion of free lunch, to say it in quick terms, people making less than $34,000 a year. So low income, Milford had a disproportionate share. Special needs students, we had a disproportional share. That was the second area they targeted. And the third, English is a second language, which, if you haven't noticed, and we'll talk about it in addition to Brookside, for the first 40 years in Milford, since that high school was built in '74, we added one child per year, net. 1974, we graduated 222 kids. I know the number, I was one of them. Forty years later, we're at 260. But all of a sudden, the last few years, we're adding over 200 kids a year. Put it in perspective, 200 children is half of Memorial every year. So we'll talk about an addition to Brookside to deal with that. But the state came through and gave us an extra $7 million on top of their normal contribution, and that really helped us out. So as you start looking, you're going to notice that Milford's contribution of its budget is 53% this year, not 60. But the kids are still getting it, because we're getting it from the state. When we look at the major warrant articles, it's hard to even say it, $7.6 million of capital. First part is $4 million for an addition to Brookside. And I know a lot of words have been used, like trailers and modular. This is a real addition. It's called modular because it's built off-premise and brought in. But that's going to really take some of the pressure off of the kids K through 2. Stacy, we got to paint it to maintain it, and that's $200,000. And then the track, if you remember, 12 years ago, a group of forward-looking people came through, and we put down artificial turf and resurfaced the track. We were hoping to get 10 years out of it. We're 12 years in, and we're finally having to resurface. So we've gotten a lot of wear and tear behind us. We have compliance issues, like the ADA compliance, and we put a fixed amount under Rick Vilani to look around town and see what we need the most of. That's $150,000 every year. But we also have elevators. We always forget about the elevators until you have an issue like the library elevator that needs $147,000. And we'll go through all the details, the sponsors will. Town Hall has elevators that need about $60,000. Our highway department, we have a backhoe, and this is one that, I want to say, four months ago, five months ago, was $265,000. Then Scotty, what, last week? Today? Got a nice little call saying, "Oh, by the way, if you want it, it'll cost you $300,000, and by the way, you're going to wait a year." So we're fortunate that we can move on it, but we have to. The backhoe is not doing well. And of course, the trucks. Every year, one of those big trucks that go for $250,000 each, one of the dozen or so gets tired, and we have to replace it. And then finally, for the highway, we have the salt barn. If you remember, because some of you will say, "Well, we budgeted 50 grand to fix the salt barn." And we started, and then we found out, salt really is corrosive, and it ate away most of the infrastructure of the salt barn. So now we have to replace the whole salt barn. And that's going to be about $600,000, $50,000 of which we've already done. We have, as I mentioned, a large budget for safety. And when you start thinking about it, Milford's going to lead again. We're going to look at, and Officer Tassino will bring you up to date on the details, a family service unit to take care of the most needy in our town and take care of them in a positive way. And then, of course, you've got the normal routine. You've got a surveillance system at the police department that we need to keep updated, because that's used for court. We have police radios. Now, the police radios we have, when they were installed by Paul Revere, apparently worked well. But now, when our Milford police go to make calls on their radio, sometimes they get Franklin Fire Department. Not a healthy situation. So we're going to replace the radios. We have new tasers. Tasers are like everything else, they have a lifetime. This year, we'll ask for $26,000. I want to be clear, it's a $100,000 vote, because we're going to be paying them over four years. But this year will be 26. The next three years will be another $30-some thousand each. So I don't want anybody thinking, "Well, we already bought all our tasers." No, we're not. We're buying them all, we're getting them all, but if you vote this $26,000 in, next year, you got to pay the second year, the third year, and the fourth year in subsequent years. And then obviously, air cylinders. Some of the heroes of Milford run into burning buildings, and after so many years, the cylinders that provide oxygen to them wear out. So we got $80,000 for that. And then, of course, for once, the Parks Department's getting their own truck. Up until now, I don't know how old, what'd you do, give it to them 12 years ago, 13 years ago, the pickup? Finally, it's worn out, and they're getting a new truck to do their business. Coming up, we have five major schools in Milford. They last 40 to 50 years each, so every 10 years, it's a new school. This time, it's the high school that needs either renovated or, God forbid, made new. Even renovating is going to be about $175 million. And if we're lucky, we'll get 45% of that. That's going to add about $7.5 million. And if, people have forgotten, every million dollars we spend adds $80 a year. So when you increase the spending by $7.5 million, multiply that times eight, and you got $600 bucks for the next 20, 30 years. Finally, I just wanted to bring up, I mentioned the capital and warrant items, the $7.6 million, that's going to come before you. Operational funds, that's contract salaries that Dr. Taylor will be walking us through as contracts are negotiated, and now we have to fund them. That comes up to a total of $8 million. Again, my hat gets tipped to the department heads, because our free cash was over seven. Thank God. And we're keeping $1.5 million, because if the school building assistance program calls us, administration calls us and says, "We've approved you going forward on the high school," we're going to need a million and a half to do a feasibility study. And the last two tidbits, long-term stabilization, $24,300,000. And the, call it short-term, we can't find a name for the other stabilization account, is already up to $7.6 million. So we have $32 million tucked away, just in case. So again, my hat's off to all the department heads and to everybody sitting here, because it's your wisdom and your guidance that's allowed us to be this strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Correa. Are there any other reports? If not, what's the pleasure of the meeting? Article 1?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Richard Vilani, at-large member. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $150,000 to be utilized for the purpose of continuing to address the town-wide ADA improvement plan or any other ADA improvement project of benefit to the town. Said sum to be divided equally among the Park Department, School Department, and overall general government.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation is favorable and voted care to be heard. Mr. Attorney Vilani?
Ladies and gentlemen, the town received a grant to work with a consultant to develop an American with Disabilities ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. This plan was approved by the Select Board in town meeting in 2018. The plan provided a report for all town buildings, schools, parks, recreation areas. In addition, we will be working on ADA projects to include resident access to the town website and the library for those individuals who are visually impaired. This past year, the town completed several important ADA projects. They include repairing a handicap ramp and railings at the police station, repairing the automatic doors at the senior center, installing a new playground at Tank Field with ADA-compliant swing matting and walkway, installing an ADA-compliant benches along the walkway at Calzone Park, and installing an ADA-compliant poured-in-place rubber surfacing system at the Brookside Elementary School. This article seeks the sum of $150,000 to be used to continue with the ADA projects, as well as other ADA projects at town halls, schools, and in our parks. I urge your support for this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Vilani. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. We'll take the remote vote first. All those in favor will vote yes, all those opposed no. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. All those opposed no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 2? Mr. Walsh, thank you.
Mike Walsh, Milford Board of Selectmen. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $117,545 to be utilized to fund the cost items within a collective bargaining agreement with the Milford Dispatches, retroactive to July 1st, 2020.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, this contract was not yet completed when we did our review, so we do not have a chance to review it in committee.
Okay, so the Finance Committee does not have a recommendation for or against?
Correct.
Any voter care to be heard, Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Moderator, Mr. Moderator, town meeting members. This article seeks to fund the cost of items contained in a collective bargaining agreement between the town of Milford and the Milford Public Safety Dispatches Union, the Massachusetts Coalition of Police, Local 218, and the AFL-CIO. The additional cost is $117,545. This amount will supplement salaries and wages, retroactive to July 1st, 2020. I urge your support on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question, voter in precinct 2? Can you come up to the mic, Ms. Hastert, and speak? Thank you.
Susan Hastert, precinct 2. In the warrant, it's printed as 2021. I would like clarification on if it's retroactive to 2020, July 1st, or 2021.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, thank you for that. I realize it does say 2021, but I do assure you, it is retroactive to July 1st, 2020. That was an error on my part. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $117,545 to be utilized to fund the cost items within the collective bargaining agreement with the Milford Dispatches, retroactive to July 1st, 2020. All those in favor remotely may, excuse me, all those remotely may now vote either yes or no. Okay. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. All those opposed no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to authorize a Select Board to grant to the abutter TSS Realty, Inc., an easement for passage or other rights in land in relation to a small triangular parcel of land located on the northwest side of Beaver Street, which parcel is more particularly shown as parcel 4 on a plan entitled Stud Division Plan of Land in Milford, Gary Aaron Hounen, Inc., Surveyor, September 14th, 1981, which is Plan 32710C filed with Land Court, certificate of title number 7295.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
The recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Attorney Moody?
Ladies and gentlemen, back in, maybe not many of you remember, in the early 1980s, we extended Beaver Street, reconnected it with Route 109, which is a very important industrial development project. So we had to relocate and lay out the street, and in the course of doing that, the old right-of-way, various little pieces were left, some of which were subsequently transferred to abutters, but some were just neglected and nobody particularly thought of. A developer has bought an abutting parcel, and you can see the plan that's referred to up here, the Land Court Plan. The piece that was left is that small yellow piece, the little triangle you see down to the right. And this will simply ensure that they can utilize that property for what it's intended, for access to their own property. So the Select Board felt it was perfectly legitimate to do this. Something that, had we done it back in the early 1980s, we would have transferred the whole thing to the abutter. So I urge your support.
Thank you, Attorney Moody. Any other voter care to be heard? Nope. Okay, the voters are reminded that the granting of easements requires a two-thirds vote. Since nobody has spoken in opposition, I will take a voice vote. If that's not unanimous, then we'll have to take a standing vote. So at this time, the remote may vote yes or no. Okay, all those in favor will manifest by saying aye. All those opposed no. The motion is carried unanimously. Article 4. Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Christopher Wilson, Milford School Committee. I move that the town vote to appropriate a sum of money in the amount of four million dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford School Committee for the purpose of purchasing modular classrooms at the Brookside Elementary School, and further to meet that appropriation by transferring said sum from the excess and deficiency account.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Town meeting members, Milford is a growing town, and with that, our school population has grown. Ten years ago, the total school enrollment was approximately four thousand, two hundred students. Today, our enrollment is approaching four thousand, six hundred students. If you average a single grade's enrollment, that was about three hundred and twenty-five students, and is now three hundred and fifty students. Over the past ten years, we have added more than four hundred students, which is in excess of an entire grade's enrollment. With average class sizes increasing, we need to expand to provide a better educational environment and experience for our students. This request for an additional learning space will provide six full-size classrooms at Brookside Elementary School. Brookside was selected because it was best suited for the space required, and by adding an addition to only one school reduces the cost for the infrastructure work needed to accommodate the structure. The term modular is being used to only define how the structure is being built, transported, and connected to the existing building. Unlike past modular designs, this purpose-built structure is constructed off-site, trailered to the location, and set by crane on a permanent foundation. The units are designed to match the current building exterior and built to meet Massachusetts' Building Code, meaning the structure is built to the same standards as a traditional addition while not disrupting the students during the construction process. This structure is anticipated to last the lifetime of the existing Brookside Elementary School. If approved tonight, we anticipate the six new classrooms to be in place and ready for the start of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Additionally, a large majority of desks, tables, and chairs will be shifted from current classrooms without the need to request for further funding. Tonight's request will not increase the school's operating budget in terms of a yearly lease agreement. This is a one-time expense request. I respectfully ask for your support. Thank you.
Does any other voter care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Nero?
Let's discuss why we need to expand Brookside. A dozen years ago, Governor Patrick brought thousands of illegal immigrants to Massachusetts. He asked each city and town to take them in. All our surrounding towns took in one or two. One town took in nine. Milford agreed to accept hundreds and hired over one hundred new school staff. We acted as a sanctuary town and took in these hundreds. They said when they came to Milford, "Nobody will bother us," and hundreds more came besides these illegal immigrants. This is why we need to expand Brookside, and next year, a two-hundred-million-dollar high school. But there's more. Why we need to expand Brookside, a dozen years ago, the school population was dropping like a stone. We were going to have to dramatically reduce school staff, cut jobs. We needed more students to keep those school jobs. That's why we agreed to this plan with the state, to take in hundreds of illegal immigrants, and why we need to expand Brookside. The school budget is someplace around sixty-five million dollars. Sixty-four percent of it is spent for non-English-speaking people. Forty-two million dollars is spent for these sixty-four percent. Our non-English students cost sixteen hundred dollars apiece, and that's why we're expanding Brookside. We spend forty-two million dollars to educate these non-English students. The state gives us three million dollars to educate these students. It's costing Milford taxpayers thirty-nine million dollars to educate non-English-speaking students, plus four million for this expansion. Thirty-six percent, sixteen hundred students are English-speaking students, native Milfordians. No additional hiring needed, no additional expansion of our buildings, no expansion of Brookside. We had, if we did not ask the state to send these hundreds of immigrants to us, we would be laying off one-half of our school staff, twenty-six hundred are non-English-speaking. We need to hire more staff, and we need to expand Brookside. We need to expand every school building as time goes on, and we need to build a two-hundred million-dollar high school. And keep in mind, the sixty-four percent is the tip of the iceberg. A dozen years ago, our non-English-speaking students were eight percent, just over three hundred. In twelve years, it's grown to twenty-six hundred English, non-English-speaking. Non-English-speaking population is growing by five percent a year, an additional five million dollars each year to educate them. Two hundred additional students each year, with the need to hire more staff and expand Brookside. Why would our officials enter into such an agreement with the state? Milford gets three million dollars from the state, spends forty-two million, and we need to expand each building. It's a very simple answer: jobs. Jobs for friends and family. Every town official had the opportunity to put their friends on the school payroll when this happened. Every town official that cooperated in this plan to completely change the fabric of Milford overnight was given the opportunity to put somebody on the school payroll. We have hired well over one hundred additional staff, and it's growing every year. The Mass Department of Education reflects, Milford has the highest staff-to-student ratio in the state.
Mr. Nero, just wanted to interrupt you. One second, you've got about thirty seconds to wrap it up.
All right, thank you. That's why we need to expand Brookside: more jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nero. Any other?
Mr. Moderator, I may come back three times for three minutes.
Absolutely right. Mr. Visconti?
I'll get to you next.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti, town meeting member from precinct eight. According to the four largest school-ranking organizations, the average class size in Milford is well below the state average. So through you, Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask the sponsor, by how many students will the average class size be reduced with the addition of these modular units? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Visconti. Mr. Wilson? Do you have an answer for Mr.? Okay, there's no answer for that question, Mr. Visconti. Any other voter care to be heard?
David Levine, precinct one, Finance Committee meeting. I just want to say, we're an inclusive town to the previous speaker. I think we support all our children and our students, illegal or legal. So I just want to, I just don't know where the previous speaker was going with this, but it's a four-million-dollar project, and I urge you support to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levine. Any other voter care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator, move the question.
I'm gonna recognize Mr. Nero. He did, then we'll move the question if you want to.
The Mass Department of Education reflects Milford current enrollment, forty-two hundred students. Enrollment nineteen years ago was forty-one sixty. There has been an increase of seventy-five students in nineteen years. However, Milford's minority students has increased from eight percent, three hundred students, to sixty-four percent, twenty-six hundred. The Department of Education reflects the capacity at forty-six fifty-one, currently forty-two thirty-five, four hundred and sixteen vacancies in the system. Does this sound like we have to expand Brookside and hire more staff? The enrollment of native Milfordians is currently thirty-six percent. Sixteen hundred students are Milfordians. Without the twenty-six hundred non-English-speaking students, we'd have to, again, cut the staff of Milford's school system in half. We're asked to expand Brookside to improve the education of our children. Department of Education reflects that Milford was placed on a watch list of potentially failed schools a few years ago. Currently, it is at the bottom third of the Massachusetts school systems. Milford is rated one of the worst school systems in the region by the state, not me. Hopkinton top ten, several surrounding communities just under top ten. Do you think expanding Brookside is going to improve that standing? Then the School Department, I ask you what the answer to all of this is, expanding Brookside. I say no, a simple no. No more money. Tell the school committee, we're not here to create jobs for friends, to build new schools. You created this financial mess. You figure it out with no more of our money. There's an old saying, when you make a bad decision, someday the chickens will come home to roost. Well, the chickens are pecking at our door. Tell the school committee, there'll be no place for the chickens to roost, because we're not paying four million dollars for any new chicken coops. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nero. Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Correa?
I'm gonna start by saying I'm sorry. I'm not prepared for this discussion, but I can't stand to listen to those kids. I can't stand to listen to, "We're rated the lowest of the low." Ladies and gentlemen, look around. I had two daughters who went through the Milford school system. It was so bad that every college they applied to, they got accepted, and they did well in these colleges. I'm glad that this discussion didn't happen back when I was a kid, because I was one of them. Or you were one of them. Nobody ever told us we were not welcome in Milford. I didn't speak English. I learned. But Milford took my family in. Milford gave me an education. And when you talk about these kids, they're our kids. They bleed Milford red. They're as Milford as everybody. You can't look at them and say, "Oh, you're not one of us." That's not Milford. This town meeting is always taking care of our kids. And yes, we need a new school. And yes, in ten years, we'll need another new school. And in ten years after that, we'll need another one, whether we renovate or build new, because we take care of our families, we take care of our kids. And God bless the data. We're only getting three million dollars. Well, the budget last year went up by seven, incremental. So I don't know where all these numbers come from, but in your heart, vote the way Milford's always done, to take care of our kids, not to alienate children. Please. I was the one, you can ask the school superintendent, that asked him why he needed more space for decades, where we're adding one kid. Now we're adding two hundred. Where are you gonna put them? You're not gonna turn your back on them. This town hall has never been used to turn their back on our kids, and God, I hope they never will. Please, think about what you're voting on. We need this school.
Thank you, Mr. Correa. Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Bertorelli?
I have a question.
Mr. Bertorelli has moved the question, attempt to shut off debate. It's not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds vote. So at this time, will people, I mean, the members voting remotely, please vote yes or no? All those in favor will please rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Okay. All those opposed, may rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one reports five in favor, two opposed. Precinct two? Precinct two reports eight in favor, zero opposed. Precinct three? Precinct three reports nine in favor, zero opposed.
One opposed.
Excuse me, one opposed. Precinct four? Precinct four reports eleven in favor, one opposed. Precinct five? Precinct five reports seventeen in favor, one opposed. Precinct six? Precinct six reports fourteen in favor, zero opposed. Precinct seven? Precinct seven reports eighteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct eight? Precinct eight reports eight in favor, five opposed. At-large? At-large reports seventeen in favor, none opposed. And the remote is five in favor, one opposed. One hundred and twelve having voted in the affirmative, twelve opposed. The motion to move the previous question is carried. All those in favor, that the town, on the question, that the town vote to appropriate a sum of money in amount of four million dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford School Committee for the purpose of purchasing modular classrooms at the Brookside Elementary School, and further to meet that appropriation by transferring said sum from the excess and deficiency of fund, all those in favor will manifest, oh, all those, all those voting remotely will please vote yes or no? No, this is the vote on the motion, the main motion on the article. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article five.
Town Moderator?
Town moderator, town meeting members, I moved that the town vote to transfer the sum of $9,196 from the excess and deficiencies account, said sum of money to be utilized to repair the HVAC coolant pipes and supporting brackets at the Milford Town Library.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable on this article.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter here to be heard? Mrs. Abizla?
Mrs., yeah, Stephanie Abizla, uh, town, chairman of the town library. Uh, this article seeks to transfer the sum of the $9,196 to replenish funds used for the emergency repair situation of the HVAC system back in early September. Repairs were done within the budget, however, that depletes the account and at the direction of the finance committee and the budget director, it was indicated that the best course of action is to replenish the account. I urge your support on this article.
Thank you, Mrs. Abizla. There's any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. Uh, all those in favor or opposed may vote now remotely. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article six.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to amend section 3.9 signs of the zoning bylaw related to murals as follows. By adding in subsection 3.9.3 definitions, definitions, the following new definition for the term mural, mural, graphic artwork painted directly on the exterior wall of a building. And in addition, by inserting in subsection 3.9.3 definitions, the following new subsection H in the definition of the term quote sign and of quote, H, within the CA and CB districts, murals painted on a side or rear building facade installed under the auspices of the select board after consultation with the Milford Cultural Council.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable on this article.
Finance committee recommendation is favorable. Uh, any other voter here to be heard? Oh, I'm sorry, we asked for the planning board report. Thank you, Mr. Canelli.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Mass General Law, uh, chapter 48, section 5, Milford Planning Board on October 4th, 2022 remotely conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing regarding the subject matter of Article 6, at which time the planning board had voted three in favor, one opposed to making a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article 6 is the application of the Milford Cultural Council to amend section 3.9 signs of the zoning bylaw relating to murals. Therefore, the planning board recommends Article 6 be adopted as printed in the warrant. Article 6 proposes a zoning amendment to provide for the installation of a limited number of murals along the Route 16 corridor through downtown Milford. This amendment will not only establish a new definition for the term mural, but more importantly, it will provide that murals meeting certain criteria will not be considered signs for the purposes of zoning. To attain such exempt status, murals will need to be painted on only the side or rear walls of a building, building located within the CA, CB zoning districts, and that it be installed with the support or sponsorship of the select board after consultation with the Milford Cultural Council. This process will assure that the murals will be both culturally appropriate and historically accurate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canelli. Any other voter here to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Patty Solomon, precinct two, 23 Janic Road. Ladies and gentlemen, the cultural council has been working very hard to introduce public art in Milford. Over the last two years, we have commissioned local artists to paint 15 picnic tables and 12 trash barrels, which have been placed around town. Just last week, we installed four hand painted game boards on the picnic tables at Louisa Lake. Our goal in sponsoring this article is to provide a path for installing murals downtown. Currently, the signed bylaw considers a mural to be a sign and therefore subject to a size restriction. We have worked with the town planner to write this amendment, which accomplishes three things. One defines and exempts murals from the signed bylaw. Two stipulates where murals can be painted on the side or back of a building, only in the downtown corridor in zones CA and CB, which goes from the hospital property east along Main Street to Quarry Plaza. Three specifies that the cultural council work in tandem with the select board to determine the location and content of possible murals. We are very excited about this opportunity to enhance Milford's downtown corridor with more public art and believe these projects will contribute to Milford's ongoing revitalization. On behalf of all the members of the cultural council, we urge you to vote favorably, favorably on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solomon. Any other voter here to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those voting remotely may now vote. Either yes or no. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion is, okay, motion is carried. Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. Uh, we'll have to redo the vote. Uh, mending the zoning bylaw requires a two-thirds vote. I apologize. Since we had some opposition here, uh, somebody voted no, we'll have to take a standing vote. So, uh, at this time, we'll reset the remote. There was somebody that voted against it, right? Did I hear correctly? Okay. No, not the remote. I'm talking about out here. Yeah, the voice phone. Okay. At this time, those voting remotely may vote yes or no. Uh, all those in favor will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Okay. All those opposed will rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Precinct one. Precinct one reports six in favor, two opposed. Precinct two? Precinct two reports eight in favor, zero opposed. Precinct three? Precinct three reports 10 in favor, zero opposed. Precinct four? Precinct four, 12 in favor, one opposed. Precinct five? Precinct five, 19 in favor, zero opposed. Precinct six? Precinct six, 14 in favor, zero opposed. Precinct seven? Precinct seven, 19 in favor, none opposed. Precinct eight? Precinct eight, 14 in favor, none opposed. At-large? At-large, 17 in favor, none opposed. And remote is five in favor, none opposed. You have 124 to three. Okay. 124 having voted in affirmative, uh, three opposed. The motion, uh, the necessary two-thirds has been acquired and the motion is carried. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $260,000, said sum to be utilized to establish and/or maintain the Milford Police Department Family Services Unit.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the finance committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the finance committee recommends favorable on this article.
Okay. Finance committee recommendation is favorable. There's any voter here to be heard? Mr. Uh, we recognize Robert Tassino, Deputy Police Chief. Thank you. 55 High Street, Milford. I believe he's a town meeting member too?
No, I'm not.
No? Oh, just a registrar? Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Moderator, um, this is actually pretty cut and dry. What I'm asking to do here is it's no taxpayer money. I know that seems a little weird. Um, the town of Milford received money from the United States District Attorney, uh, through a settlement of the, if you remember, Big Farmer and the other J&amp;J, and there were a bunch of other pharmaceutical industries that were successfully litigated by the United States District Attorney. Uh, that money was then given to various communities. Uh, Milford's sum is actually, uh, less than I'm requesting. Uh, so it's basically a, for lack of a better word, a play on words to reappropriate this money and have it, um, going to the Family Services Unit. The Family Services Unit, I'm proud to say, uh, we just received a grant, um, about a week and a half ago from the Department of Public Health, uh, which is gonna help us bridge the gap. Uh, and again, this is money that we, it's taken us a lot of time and a lot of hard work and I want to thank Attorney Murray for all his work at the State House, um, getting this grant money to Milford. Um, the long and short, ladies and gentlemen, is, um, I took an 11-day period from last year. Uh, these are things you don't read about for the simple reason is you can't read about them. They're not in the police log. They are protected by HIPAA. Um, so you don't know about these things. But 11-day period, uh, over the summer this year, we had nine confirmed sexual assaults. We had four suicide attempts, two which resulted in death. And we had in excess of 12 overdoses, three which resulted in death. Okay? 11-day period. Okay? Uh, this is, um, some new, um, thought concept of trying to bring the mental health and the opioid addiction, um, basically on the road and doing the most good for people who, who need the most help. And again, like I said, this is basically, uh, lack of a better word, is just a reappropriation of the money that we're already getting. Um, I ask you for your support on this. Um, the bottom line is this is gonna save lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Tassino. Does any other voter here to be heard? Mr. Abizla?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Russ Abizla, precinct three. Um, have some issues with the money here. One, in the explanation that we got from the finance committee, it says we're waiting on a half a million dollar grant from the state. Uh, we just heard that we're getting $260,000, in effect, reallocated from the pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical results money. If the $500,000 is not granted, we're still appropriating the $260,000. According to what I read in that definition by the finance committee, we're gonna buy a van and some equipment for $260,000. We can buy a brand-new truck a little later on for $250,000 that does plow. I would like more information personally before I allocate the $260,000. Not complaining about what the program does. Not complaining about the help that we're gonna do to these people who need the help. I just want a better explanation of where the money's coming from, how it's gonna be spent. Is this gonna be an annual allocation as part of our budget now for $260,000? Are we hiring people to support all this? Or is it gonna be internal to the police department? I just need more information before I can support this article. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Abizla. Officer Tassino.
So, thank you for your question, and they're valid questions. Um, quite simply, we already have the money approved from the state, that $500,000. And that $500,000 is gonna be, it's, you redo it every year. And no, we're not coming back to this town for any more money for this unit. And you said vans and cars and stuff like that. Yes, yes, sir. Uh, vans so we can transport people who suffer from mental illness and addiction and to take them where they need to go. That's the whole purpose of this. This $260,000, which is again, is money we already have, that we're not paying for, is going to buy a van, a car. It's gonna outfit the outreach unit itself. But it's a one-time, um, we're asking for this money one time. Again, it's money that we're supposed to be using for this. So, I'll be honest with everybody, I'm kinda confused why I'm asking in the first place. Um, well, I'm being honest. I, I didn't understand that, but here I am today. So, yes, and we are gonna be hiring a clinician, mental health clinician, sir, and that's gonna be paid out of the grant, not this money. Uh, this money, again, is to start this unit. We need to buy certain things that the grant will not allow us to buy, i.e. a van, i.e. a car, um, computer system for this new unit. Um, but this unit is gonna pay for mental health clinicians, addiction clinicians. Uh, it's also gonna pay for an overseeing officer because there's a jail diversion component with this, which is the whole purpose of this, right? To get off the merry-go-round of, you know, mental health and addiction and end up in jail. Cause that does nobody any good. You go to jail, you get out, and we're chasing you through the street to the same thing again, cause you spiraled out of control. This is groundbreaking stuff. This is next level. But this is what's gonna do the most good for people who are suffering and dying in our community. And again, I just want you to remember, I don't know why I'm here, cause this money was given us. So, thank you. I hope I, I shed some light on that, sir.
Thank you, Officer Tassino. Any other voter here? Ms. Mastriani.
Um, Officer Tassino, I'm in, in favor of the overall, um, plan, but I'm not clear on if the money is coming from grants, so for this year, and then also you said for the clinician. Going forward, won't that affect budgets? Won't that require an increase in budgets going forward? Or will we be able to get grant money for the clinician going forward? Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other voter here to be heard? Okay. If not, the question comes upon the motion, uh, to raise and appropriate the sum of $260,000, $60,000, said sum to be utilized to establish and/or maintain the Milford Police Department Family Services Unit. Uh, all those in favor or opposed may vote now remotely. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article eight.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $140,000 to be utilized by the Milford Police Department to replace the current, uh, audio video Department to replace the current audio/video surveillance system at Police Headquarters.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Officer Tassino.
As far as surveillance goes, I want to thank Chris George, the IT Director here for the town, came into the Police Department, and the time that I spent with Chris George going through everything, I think I spent half the time picking his jaw up off the ground 'cause he couldn't believe how bad our system is at the Police Department. You have to understand that this all came to light as a matter of law. In prosecution, we use these videotapes, we use these audiotapes, and we watch our guests that are in our cells. This is not something that we can get away from. The system, God love it, is twenty years old, and when it crashes, we have to pay someone to come in to sit face-to-face with people who are at our cells because we can't take the chance of them not being watched. And the system goes down a lot. And it's been a big problem for us, it certainly places us in a bad way as far as liability in the town. It's twenty years old, I don't know what else to say. It just needs to be fixed, and Chris George, I said, made these recommendations with us, and it's just time to fix it.
Thank you, Officer Tassino. Any other voter care to be heard? Nope. If not, the motion comes upon the question as presented. All those voting remotely may now do so. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article nine. Mr. Mazakelli.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and Mr. Moderator, Paul Mazakelli, Milford Select Board and also Board of Health Member. Article nine, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars, said sum to be available to be utilized by the Board of Health in order to repair, renovate, and/or remove the building located at fifty-six Larman Street in Milford or other dilapidated buildings according to the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 111, Section 127B, and other applicable provisions of the General Laws, any amount expended in accordance with law to be a lien upon the property.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation? Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard, Mr. Mazakelli?
Ladies and gentlemen, this article is a result of our response to numerous complaints and concerns from residents in this neighborhood as well as local public safety officials. This property is in a severe state of disrepair and cannot be left in its present condition due to the aesthetics and health and safety issues it poses to the neighborhood and those who had entered the structure. This property is located in an older neighborhood with houses and property well-maintained and in good sanitary condition. The town has been in communication with the property owner with hope of achieving voluntary compliance, but thus far little or no effort on his behalf was made to ensure compliance. This property is considered dangerous and a public nuisance. This article would allow the town to take direct action to abate these serious conditions if needed. There would be no risk to the town as to the amount needed would be placed as a lien on the property and should be paid back if and when the property is sold. And I urge your support to this article. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mazakelli. Any other voter care to be heard? The voter in precinct four. Okay, thank you.
Andrew Johansson, precinct four. I just have a couple of questions on this article. I was just wondering if we could have a little bit more input as to what the status is of the owner of this property, and if so, is that owner gonna be taking any kind of responsibility for the money that's gonna be expended to either refurbish this property, tear it down, and just want a little more information as to what the status of that is. Thank you.
Attorney Moody, thank you.
As Mr. Mazakelli described, this property is incredibly dilapidated and has been in this condition for many, many years, and it's in violation of the sanitary code in every possible respect. So, but we're not here to talk about the owner. The owners have worked, been in contact with the owner, and the owner has promised to cooperate, but again, as Mr. Mazakelli said, nothing has happened. So, it's very important to appropriate this money. If the owner takes care of the issue and, you know, reconstructs the building, fine, but if he doesn't, the town has to move on it. Frankly, after fifteen years, the neighbors have been waiting for something to be done. And as the motion indicates, whatever the town spends to take care of this property, we lean on the property, and there's not a residential lot in Milford that isn't worth a lot more than fifty thousand dollars, so I'm not worried about recovering the money if the town ultimately has to take action.
Thank you, Attorney Moody. Any other voter care to be heard? One second, Mr. Visconti. The chair recognizes Angel Caligoni, who's participating remotely. Mr. Caligoni. Is Mr. Caligoni there? Mr. Caligoni, you have the floor. Okay, I'll recognize Mr. Visconti until we figure out what's going on here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti, town meeting member from precinct eight. Just a quick question. If the town decides to, as was one of the options, to renovate the property, does this, despite the lien that would be placed on the property, does this mean that the current owner can decide never to sell the property and live comfortably in a completely renovated house at the expense of the Milford taxpayers? Thank you.
Attorney Moody, thank you.
Difficult one to respond to there. The likelihood of the town renovating this property is slim. There may be circumstances where a dilapidated property can be renovated, and the town does it, and the town recovers its lien, every penny it expended plus interest, and maybe the person who's there does somehow benefit from that. But this is highly unlikely, and it's not gonna be the case here. What we expend, we will recover, including interest, which will accrue at a rate, I believe, that's same as the taxes, of about twelve percent. So, I really don't know what else to say.
Thank you, Attorney Moody. Do we have? Okay. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote in favor, or if they're opposed. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article ten. Mr. Mazakelli.
Paul Mazakelli, Milford Select Board, Article ten. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-two dollars, said sum to be utilized to fund the cost items within the collective bargaining agreement with the Highway, Park, and Cemetery Department employees retroactive to July first, two-thousand-and-twenty-one, said sub to be divided among departments as followed: Highway Department, fifty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars; Parks Department, twenty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars; and Vernon Grove Cemetery Department, five thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, this item was not ready at our prior review meeting, so we do not have a recommendation.
Okay, so the Finance Committee does not have a recommendation. Any voter care to be heard?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator.
This article seeks to fund the cost of items contained in a collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Milford and the Highway, Parks, and Cemetery Department. The additional cost is eighty-six thousand, five-hundred-and-two dollars. This amount will supplement salaries and wages retroactive to July first, two-thousand-and-twenty-one, and I urge your support for this article. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mazakelli. Any other voter care to be heard? Nope. If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely will now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article eleven. Attorney Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars, said sum to be utilized by the Milford Police Department for the purpose of upgrading police radios.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Officer Tassino. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm gonna use Mr. Korea's eloquent words. He said Paul Revere in the radio system. He was correct. Half my department right now, half of the men and women, we have, you talk about fiscal responsibility. Was it last year, we had money in our budget and we only bought the radios that we could afford, so half our department is running with these outdated radios. When he said that we listened to the Franklin Fire Department, he wasn't kidding. That's not something Franklin Fire is doing wrong. These radios are just so old that it bleeds over into our system, and we can't shut them out of these radios. It's also raining outside right now, and I have anxiety because, yes, our radios go out when it rains. It's a pretty scary thing in a place as big as Milford. Then we're, you know, relegated to text messages, forming a texting group from our dispatchers so we can dispatch our officers. This is the reality of what we try to mitigate and deal with. This money will help us bridge that gap. It'll give every officer that new compatible radio. The old radios can't be updated. I just want to answer that question before somebody asks. It can't be updated. We've literally crossed every bridge, put every Band-Aid and piece of gum on our radio system. You know, I want to publicly thank the Fire Command staff for helping us with our radios, but we're in a bad way, and I urge your support of this. It's an officer's safety issue, it's a public safety issue, and we really need to get this done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Officer Tassino. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, if not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely will now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twelve. Attorney Moody.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars, said sum of money to be utilized under the jurisdiction of the Board of Assessors for property appraisals, expert witness and professional consultant fees, and costs and expenses associated with appellate tax board litigation.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any other voter care to be heard? No? Thank you, Attorney Moody.
The article really is self-explanatory. The Board of Assessors performs an important function in defending the valuations that are set, in particular for major commercial industrial properties or major residential properties, whether it frequently appeals the appellate tax board. It's absolutely necessary to defend those values with expert witnesses and other consultants, and so, just as I think last year the town put up twenty-five thousand dollars for the assessors to do this same thing, here they're asking for it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Moody. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. Okay, thank you. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. We're just gonna take just a brief two-minute recess. The meeting will come back in order. Okay, Article thirteen. Attorney Moody. Motion's been made and seconded to pass over Article thirteen. It's a motion to pass over and attempt to take no action on the article as inserted in a warrant. It is debatable. Does any voter care to be heard in the motion to pass over? No. If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article fourteen. Motion's been made and seconded to pass over Article fourteen. Again, as attempt to take no action on the article as inserted in the warrant, it is debatable. Does any voter care to be heard in the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those participating remotely All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article fifteen. Mr. Arkuti?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, Joe Arkuti, Park Commissioner. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty-three thousand dollars, said some to be utilized by the park commissioners to purchase two commercial mowers with mulching kits and baggers.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Arkuti?
Town Meeting Members, the two mowers in question have reached and passed their life expectancy. One is being used as a pot source for the other. In order to maintain our workload, we need two in-service mowers that are required. These mowers have been on our five-year capital plan. I urge you to vote favorable on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arkuti. Does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members. Stephanie Abisla, Chair of the Board of Library Trustees. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of one hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, said some to be utilized by the Board of Library Trustees for the purpose of replacement of the Milford Library elevator controller hydraulic and electric systems.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mrs. Abisla?
The elevator system at the library is thirty-five years old with a life expectancy of twenty-five, so we've done fairly well with it. However, it comes to the point now where we need to replace the hydraulics, the controller, the electronics. And our original request was for seventy-one thousand dollars, but in the meantime, we found out that the fire panel is outdated and cannot be, it needs to be replaced. It cannot be updated. And therefore, it expanded our amount to one hundred forty-seven thousand dollars, and I urge your support in this article.
Thank you, Mrs. Abisla. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely will now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article seventeen.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford School Committee for the purpose of lighting the high school softball field.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Wilson?
Town Meeting Members, this request for adding lights to the softball field at Milford High School has been on the capital plan. It was moved up one year in anticipation of the future work at the Milford High School turf field facility. This will allow for the installation of lights to happen in parallel with the facility's upgrades proposed in Article thirty-two. This field is used not only by the Milford High School students, but by other youth organizations in our town. As you know, living in Massachusetts, we have months with less daylight than other states. Lighting our softball fields will provide the ability for teams to practice and play without fear of being called off for darkness. Lights at the facility will also allow our community to host tournaments by expanding their playing time. I respectfully ask for your support on this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article eighteen.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, Reno DeLuzio, Chairman of the Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee. I move that the town vote to amend the standing vote of the town meeting entitled Town Meeting Study and Improvement Committee, Section A, Duties of the Committee, by deleting Item seven therefrom.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. DeLuzio?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, one of the committee's seven enumerated duties is to organize pre-town meeting forums. The objective of the pre-town meeting forum was to provide town meeting members the opportunity to ask questions regarding selected warrant articles in a less formal setting than that of town meeting. The committee has been keeping statistics of town meeting member participation in the forums during the period from October two thousand and eighteen through May two thousand and twenty-two. During that period, three forums were held. Two were canceled due to COVID-19. One was canceled due to scheduling difficulties and other factors, and two were canceled due to less than fifteen percent responses to the committee's request for articles for consideration. Of the three forums that were held, the average attendance as a percentage of town meeting precinct members was twelve percent, or twenty-five members. The committee requested articles for consideration for five forums. The average response as a percentage of town meeting members was six percent, or thirteen members. Given these low participation rates, the committee finds it difficult to justify continuing the pre-town meeting forum program. At its May eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two meeting, the committee voted to discontinue organizing the forums. Although we did not achieve the desired objective, the pre-town meeting forum experiment was worth pursuing. Going forward, the degree and manner of asking questions at town meeting will be as instructed by the moderator and as will be described in the Milford Town Meeting procedural guide now being developed by the committee. I recommend you vote favorably on this motion.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuzio. Does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article nineteen.
Thank you. Good evening. I move that the town vote to raise an appropriate sum of ten thousand dollars, said some to be utilized in relation to the Milford Youth Center for the purpose of electrical upgrades in the center facility.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Rickert?
Hi, my name is Brendan Rickert. I'm the Chair of the Milford Youth Commission, also a member of Precinct Six. These upgrades are a reflection of expanded use of the center. So the original project to renovate the building was for the main floor only. We've actually since upgraded the upper floor and the basement. These ten thousand dollars reflect basic electrical upgrades, no different than if you were redoing your kitchen and having to redo your whole electrical panel like I had to do when I did ours. It's very simple electrical work, but it just needs to be done to be up to code. So that's what we're doing.
Does any other voter, thank you, Mr. Rickert. Does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article twenty. Yeah, Article twenty. Attorney Moody?
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to amend Section three point nine signs of the zoning bylaw relating to signs inside of buildings as follows: By deleting in Section three point nine point three definitions of the words, quote, "that are visible beyond five feet from the exterior of the window," end of quote, from the definition of window signs, and by replacing in subsection three point nine point five point two point two, the words, quote, "not visible beyond five feet from the exterior of the windows," end of quote, with the words, quote, "provided such signage is professionally lettered and does not exceed thirty-five percent of the window to which it is affixed," end of quote.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Rassiti? Oh, I did it again. I apologize, Mr. Cannelli. Does the Planning Board have a report? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, Pac Cannelli, Chairperson, Milford Planning Board. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section five, Milford Planning Board on October fourth, two thousand and twenty-two remotely conducted a duly posted and noticed public hearing regarding the subject of Article twenty, at which time the Planning Board voted three in favor, one opposed, to make a favorable recommendation to town meeting. Article twenty is the application of Downtown Revitalization Committee to amend Section three point nine signs of the zoning bylaw relating to signs inside of buildings. Therefore, the Planning Board recommends Article twenty be adopted as printed in the warrant. Article twenty will eliminate the regulations of signs inside of buildings. It will now allow for signs on the inside of windows to cover up to thirty-five percent of the window area. This will improve businesses' ability to display merchandise in their storefront windows without being limited by the sign regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cannelli. Any other voter care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Rassiti, I recognize Mr. Rassiti first.
Mr. Moderator, Metro City Downtown Revitalization Committee, Field Pond Road. On behalf of the Downtown Revitalization Committee, this was put forward. Basically, this is targeted downtown particular storefronts. What this does is this sets some aesthetic parameters for signage in storefronts, but also restricts signage in storefronts to not be more than thirty-five percent of the window front, which will increase visibility from the street. The language that is being removed is a little bit ambiguous and antiquated. This provides clearer parameters for business owners to be in compliance while still allowing them to proactively advertise wares and services. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rassiti. Any other voter care to be heard? Mr. Visconti?
Ladies and, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight. Mr. Moderator, and ladies and gentlemen, I move to amend the current article on the floor in the following way. In the second paragraph, after the word "affixed," add the following: For the purposes of this article, professionally lettered shall be defined as lettering installed by an entity engaged in a specific activity, that being signage, as one's main paid occupation, rather than a pastime or hobby. And the word "window" in the same paragraph shall be defined as glass area, not including the frame and the rough opening that the frame sits in.
Okay, okay. Mr. Visconti, I just have a couple of questions before I rule on this.
Sure.
Which second paragraph? Well, not during the intro, on the other. It could be the third paragraph. Okay.
Can you see the word "fixed"?
Yes, I see it at the end of the second, by replacing.
At the end of the second paragraph?
Yep, so you're adding...
After that, yeah.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded to amend Article twenty as follows: By adding "after the word 'affixed,'" for the purposes of this article, professionally lettered shall be defined as lettering installed by an entity engaged in a specific activity, quote-unquote "signage," as one's main paid occupation, rather than a pastime or hobby, in quote-unquote "window" shall be defined as glass area, not including frame or rough opening. So motion's been made and seconded. Does any voter care to be heard? Mr. Visconti?
Yes. Mr. Moderator, before I start, is there any way that million candle power spotlight can be directed maybe a little bit away from me? It's very blind and I'm having difficulty seeing here.
Unfortunately, it cannot be.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, when this article was brought to the Planning Board, I believe on October fourth, significant concern was voiced over the lack of clarity on what professionally installed meant and what a window meant. This amendment will clarify the definition of professionally installed and window and give guidance for enforcement of the lettering on the downtown storefronts. Without this amendment, there is no guidance for enforcement, and without guidance, there is chaos. And you end up with the same mess you have out there on Main Street now, only it's more in your face. So I would ask respectfully that you approve this amendment, which will help enforce enforcement of this article and actually benefit the downtown help enforce enforcement of this article and actually benefit the downtown businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Visconti. Does any other voter care to be heard on the motion to amend? Mr. Consigli.
Town Meeting Members, David Consigli, Member-at-Large. The amendment, I don't have a problem with it. Actually, it's probably a little bit better from a clarification standpoint. I guess the question becomes, in the event a business owner decides that they want to get a student from the high school, an art student, to display or to show their talent in an advertisement for that business, they now become restricted to do so. So, that's a question that I have on the amendment, and I guess I'll just leave it up to the... See if we can get an answer if that's something that the town meeting thinks about, you know, as we look forward, because there are some very talented high school art students that clearly could show their talent for a business in an advertisement utilizing the window, but it takes them out of that opportunity, because now we're going to put a word of... And I have no problem with the word "professional sign company," but I'm wondering if that's exactly what we want to do.
Thank you, Mr. Consigli. Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Once again, Mike Visconti, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight. I understand the previous speaker's concern. However, lettering the storefronts in downtown Milford is not an art project. It should be done by a professional sign company, which is what this amendment is about. This is not a new concept. I can remember when I was younger, and I'm not sure how much younger, but a lot younger, at my dad's office one day, and there's a truck out front with a sign company's name on it. I can't recall the sign company name, but there's a sign professional painting, lettering in paint the window of the front door to the entrance to my dad's office. So, as I was looking at the truck outside, I noticed that there were many other colors in little jars in the truck, reds and blues and whatever, where my dad's window was being painted with one color. So, I asked my dad, gee, can I... Or can we have some additional colors added to the lettering? Might make it a little more, you know, noticeable, and I can do that because I'm pretty talented with a brush. My dad's response was, look, the boss says it has to be lettered like this so that all of the entrances to the different tenants' doors are uniform and painted the same color so that we maintain some decor, and the building looks like it's professionally maintained. So, when he talked about the boss will not let us do that, I said to myself, well, maybe my recourse is with the boss. So, I went home that night, and I said, Mom, can I paint some colors on Dad's window? He said I had to talk to you. And it was a while before I understood that my dad, by understanding that I might not know the tenant landlord concept, he just said, the boss said it cannot be done. The point is professionally lettering windows and storefronts is not a new concept, and what this amendment seeks to do is stop what you see on Main Street now. You know, downtown property owners are scratching their heads, wondering...
Mr. Visconti, let's wrap it up, please.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other voter care to be heard on the motion to amend? If not, anybody remotely? Oh. Okay, we have to write up the amendment to have a vote on it, so. Thank you for your patience. So, the question comes upon the motion to amend Article 20 as follows. In the second paragraph, after the word "affixed," add the following: For the purposes of this article, professionally lettered shall be defined as lettering installed by an entity engaged in a specific activity, quote-unquote "signage," as one's main paid occupation, rather than a pastime or hobby, and, quote-unquote "window" shall be defined as glass area, not including frame or rough opening. All those... Do we have it up yet? Okay. All those participating remotely may now vote on the motion to amend. Okay. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, no.
No.
Motion to amend is defeated. Any voter care to be heard on the article... On the motion, main motion on Article 20? Okay. If not, the question comes upon the motion, main motion on Article 20, as presented. Again, this is amending the zoning bylaws and requires a two-thirds vote. I will take a standing vote, therefore. Are we ready for a standing vote? Are we ready for the standing vote? Yes? Okay, thank you. All those participating remotely may now vote. Okay. All those in favor will please rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Okay, all those opposed will now rise and remain standing until counted by the monitors. Okay, Precinct One.
Five in favor, two opposed.
Precinct One, five in favor, two opposed. Precinct Two?
Seven in favor, zero opposed.
Precinct Two, seven in favor, zero opposed. Precinct Three?
Nine in favor, three abstentions.
We don't count abstentions. So, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you. Precinct Four?
Ten in favor, one opposed.
Precinct Four, ten in favor, one opposed. Precinct Five?
Eighteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct Five, eighteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct Six?
Thirteen in favor, one opposed.
Precinct Six, thirteen in favor, one opposed. Precinct Seven?
Seventeen in favor, two opposed.
Precinct Seven, seventeen in favor, two opposed. Precinct Eight?
Eight in favor, two opposed.
Precinct Eight, eight in favor, two opposed. At large.
Seventeen in favor, none opposed.
At large, seventeen in favor, none opposed, and remote, four in favor, one opposed. One hundred eight having voted in favor, ten opposed. The motion necessary, two-thirds is required, and the motion is carried. Article 21. Mr. Moderator? Mr. Christopher Foley.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, Scott Christopher Foley, Highway Surveyor. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $265,000, said sum to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the purpose of replacing backhoe number one with a new backhoe for trenching, drainage work, road and sidewalk construction, snowplowing, snow removal, loading materials, and all day-to-day operations of the Highway Department.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable for this article.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Christopher Foley.
Thank you. Town Meeting Members, if approved, this machine will be replacing a 2,000 Caterpillar backhoe. The current backhoe has high hours and is in need of costly repairs, including rust holes, cracking in the bone, and numerous leaks. The 20-year-old machine, 22-year-old machine is used daily for construction, trenching, cleaning culverts, snow removal, pretty much everything we do. For emergency digging, we use it for other departments whenever needed. It would be a cost prohibitive to repair this machine with such high hours on it. If approved, the new machine will be equipped with specialty equipment for brushcutting and still perform all the work as the current machine. I ask for your support in this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher Foley. Any other voter care to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
And Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Eight. Through you, Mr. Moderator, if may I ask the sponsor for some clarification. I believe when the Finance Committee gave their initial opening remarks, they indicated that the price for the backhoe was $300,000, and I'm hearing $265,000 now. So, is it $265,000 or is it $300,000? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Visconti. Mr. Christopher Foley, thank you.
So, that's a different machine. That is a front-end loader that we will be coming up for in a little while. The backhoe is $265,000.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher Foley. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 22. Motion's been made and seconded to pass over Article 22. It's an attempt to take no action on the article as inserted in the warrant. It is debatable. Any voter care to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 23. Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Moderator?
Hold on, Mr. Wilson. Well, that's okay. Go ahead, Mr. Wilson. Proceed.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford School Committee for the purpose of interior painting at the Stacy Middle School.
Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $200,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the School Committee for the purpose of interior painting at the Stacy Middle School. So, motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Wilson.
Town Meeting Members, this request for funds is the second phase of a two-phase interior painting project at Stacy Middle School. Last year, at this same meeting, you approved the first phase at the same requested amount. This will allow for many of the common areas throughout the school to be freshly painted. Supporting tonight's request allows the School Department to completely... To complete 100% painting of the interior common areas. Additionally, Stacy Middle School has replaced flooring throughout the school, further enhancing the overall interior aesthetics. I respectfully ask for your support. Thank you.
Does any voter care to be heard? Other voter... Excuse me. Does any other voter care to be heard on the motion? Anybody remotely? Can we bring them up on the screen? Okay, thank you. Well, not the slide, but the people themselves. Okay, it'll just be another minute, I guess. The motion is on the screen. Yep, okay, put the motion to vote, please. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
Motion is carried. Article 24. Mr. Mazakelli.
Town meeting members, Article 24. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $20,000, said sum to be utilized to replace the dog kennel at the Animal Control Building.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard? Mr. Mazakelli.
Mr. Moderator.
This article seeks the sum of $20,000 to replace the dog kennels at the Animal Control Building. The dog kennels are the original kennels and are over 20 years old and need to be replaced. The old kennels and fencing will be demolished, and 10 new block walls and chain-link fencing will be installed. I urge you to support this article. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mazakelli. Any other vote okay to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 25. Attorney O'Laughlin.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to amend Article 42 of the general bylaws by inserting a new subsection J in Section 5 as follows. Quote, "A minimum of 75 square feet of open play space per dog," end quote, "or take any action in relation thereto." And further, to see if the town will amend Section 6 of said article by inserting a new subsection H as follows, quote, "A minimum of 75 square feet in open play area per dog."
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard?
Mr. Moderator.
Attorney O'Laughlin.
Ladies and gentlemen, this article seeks to amend Article 42 of the general bylaws by inserting a new subsection J in Section 5 to require a minimum of 75 square feet of open play space inside any commercial kennel, and further inserting a new subsection, excuse me, H in Section 6 to require a minimum of 75 square feet of open play space outside any commercial kennel. The town established new kennel bylaw, Article 42 of the general bylaws, at the October 25th, 2021 special town meeting, which regulates and licenses commercial dog kennels. This article provides specific space requirements for the play area for dog kennels, thereby regulating the number of dogs that can be housed in any kennel. 75 square feet of open play space requirement follows the recommendation of the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals. I urge your support of this article.
Thank you, Attorney O'Laughlin. Any other vote okay to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 26. Mr. Pillar.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christopher Pillar, Town Treasurer, at-large member. I move that the town vote to rescind $1,825,000 of authorized and unissued bonds for the purchase of the Milford Water Company.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorable on this article.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard? Mr. Pillar.
Ladies and gentlemen, at the August 2021 special town meeting, you authorized debt for the purchase of the Milford Water Company in the amount of $79 million. In December of 2021, the town purchased the water company for $77,175,000, leaving unissued debt of $1,825,000. This article looks to rescind the remaining balance. I ask for your support on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Pillar. Does any other vote okay to be heard? Nope? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 27. Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $34,740, said sum to be utilized to fund the cost items contained within the first year of a collective bargaining agreement with the Milford Association of Clerical Employees, retroactive to July 1st, 2022, and of the total sum of $3,167 shall be raised from the Sewer Enterprise Fund and further said sum to be distributed among accounts as follows. Every single account ends in 5, 1, 1, 0, so I'm only going to read the beginning of the account number. The assessor, account 141, $3,217. The treasurer, 145, $1,718. The tax collector, 146, $3,275. The benefits coordinator, account 147, $1,754. General government, account number 148, $7,273. Town clerk, account 161, $7,323. Inspections, account 240, $1,754. Highway, account 421, $2,609. Transfer station, account 432, $896. Sewer, account 440, the amount of $3,167. And the council on aging, account 541, $1,754.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the contracts weren't complete at the time of our review.
Okay, so the Finance Committee has no recommendation. Does any vote okay to be heard? Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, this article seeks to fund the cost of items contained in the collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Milford and the Milford Association of Clerical Employees, the additional cost of $34,740. This amount will be supplement, will supplement salaries and wages, retroactive to July 1st, 2022. I urge your support on this article.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Does any other vote okay to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 28. Thank you, Attorney Verlani. Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to pass over Article 28. Motion to pass over is an attempt to take no action on an article that's inserted in the warrant. It is debatable. Does any vote okay to be heard on the motion to pass over? If not, then the question comes upon the motion to pass over. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 29. Mr. Walsh. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 33, Section 59, to accept said section of the General Laws relating to the effect of military service on salary, seniority, and leave allowances of public employees.
Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 33, Section 59, Subsection E, to accept said section of the General Laws relating to the effect of military service on salary, seniority, and leave allowances of public employees. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard? Mr. Walsh.
Ladies and gentlemen, this article seeks to accept the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 33, Section 59, which allows for full payment from both the United States Government and the town for any town employee deployed into the military for the first 40 days of deployment. It further provides the employee shall not lose any seniority or any accrued vacation, sick leave, personal leave, compensation time, or earned overtime. This provision, provision of the General Laws is appropriately named the Brave Act. By accepting this provision, the town will be assisting those employees and their families who had, who at great sacrifice are deployed into the military. I urge your support for this article.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Does any other vote okay to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those in favor, excuse me, all those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 30. Mr. Mazakelli.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Article 30 says, "I, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,321, said sum to be available to fully fund the town accountant's personal service contract."
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard? Mr. Mazakelli.
The town entered into a new contract with the town accountant. This article seeks the sum of $12,321 to fund the new contract. This would also represent back pay to July 1st, 2022. I urge your support for this article. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mazakelli. Any other vote okay to be heard? Ms. Mastriani. Do you have a... No, you have to come to the podium, Matt. You can't ask an individual question like that.
Catherine Mastriani, Precinct 3, spelling question, is it personal or personnel? So what, what is that?
It's a personal service contract.
I don't, I apologize. I don't know what that means.
That's all right. Any other vote okay to be heard? Okay, if not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely will now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 31. Mr. Arkuti.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, Joe Arkuti, Park Commissioner. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $70,000 from the excess and deficiency account, said sum to be utilized by the Board of Park Commissioners to purchase a new park, park department truck.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any vote okay to be heard? Mr. Arkuti.
Town meeting members, this is a replacement for a truck that was inherited from the Sewer Department. It is at the point where it is, will not pass inspection. This truck is on our five-year capital plan and was budgeted for 2023, but at this time we feel that it's a safety concern, and that's why we're bringing it before you tonight. So, I urge you, favorable on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arkuti. Does any other vote okay to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely will now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article 32. Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, I move that the town vote to transfer from the excess and deficiency account a sum of money in the amount of $1,050,000 to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Milford School Committee for the purpose of renovating and upgrading the Milford High School turf and track.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Does any vote okay to be heard? Mr. Wilson.
Town meeting members, the school department is requesting funds to replace the current turf and resurface the track at Milford High School. The turf was installed 12 years ago and was anticipated to last 10 years. We are routinely fixing small sections of the turf that are simply worn out and are tearing apart. The track surface is also worn out from continued use by numerous community groups. This facility provides opportunity to multiple community groups, well beyond just the student athletes of Milford High School and Stacy Middle School. Multiple youth groups use this, use this facility, such as Milford Youth Football and Cheerleading, Milford Girls and Boys Soccer, Milford Girls and Boys Lacrosse. Additionally, Milford Special Olympics and Unified Sports host events throughout the year for its athletes, including a state track and field meet. Milford Community Use conducts and sponsors various fitness classes on the track and uses the facility for their summer camp. Milford High School also uses the facility for its phys ed classes. Brookside Elementary School, that is adjacent to the facility, uses this facility for its fitness and wellness classes and for special school events. Lastly, our community holds the high school graduation at this facility. The turf provides a safe playing surface that is not negatively impacted by harsh New England weather. England weather. This facility is utilized at an incredibly high volume, and both surfaces, the turf and the track, are used from sunup and beyond sunset, thanks to the lighting system. On virtually every day, there are community members walking, jogging, or playing a sport. I respectfully ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Wilson. Does any other voter care to be heard? Mister Consigli.
Thank you, Dave Consigli, uh, member at large. I have a quick question, and it's just strictly an access question. Uh, when I drove by there the last two or three times, apparently we have a handicap access point and entrance, uh, facing the tenant's course to the left. Is that fully paved or are people still parking, handicap parking, on the dirt? And is that full handicap access allowed into the track and the field? Could someone answer that question? Is that part of this project as well in coordination with the paving of the services? It's just a question.
Thank you, Mister Consigli. Any voter care to be heard? Mister Wilson.
It is my understanding that it is fully paved.
Thank you, Mister Wilson. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. Uh, all those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried. Article thirty-three. Mister Chrisifouli.
Mister Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the purpose of replacing the existing salt shed with a new salt shed for storage of winter ice melt materials and salt for snow and ice clearing operations during the winter.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mister Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mister Chrisifouli.
Mister Moderator, town meeting members. Uh, the need for this article is for full replacement of our Highway Department's thirty-seven year old salt shed. Funds were raised at the two thousand twenty special town meeting for the sum of thirty thousand dollars to replace the roof. Um, during pre-bid meetings, it was determined that the structural engineer should be brought in to assess the roof trusses in building before we replaced the roof. Uh, the structural engineer determined the trusses need to be replaced. This led to the possibility of the walls, uh, bowing out or collapsing if the trusses were removed. We spoke with, uh, Town's Building Commissioner, John Erickson. He agreed with the assessment. The determination was made that the entire building should be replaced. The building houses up to five thousand ton of salt throughout the year. We also have another smaller tent-style shed that can hold another five hundred ton. The new shed will be a larger tent-style shed capable of more capacity and able to house, uh, liquid ice melt tanks. Uh, it will also allow for trucks to dump salt inside the shed rather than outside, saving lots of time on stockpiling. I ask for your support on this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Chrisifouli. Does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-four. Uh, Attorney Moody.
Mister Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-six thousand dollars, said some to be utilized by the Milford Police Department to replace existing tasers as necessary.
Motion's been made and seconded. Uh, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mister Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Uh, Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Does any voter care to be heard? Deputy Chief Tassino.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, um, I know the Finance Committee in their, uh, opening remarks, uh, explained to you about the tasers. Um, this is actually, believe it or not, I know, and it's a large sum of money, but it's actually, um, some of our fiscal responsibility. We worked with the vendor some years ago. I can't take credit for that. That was actually Deputy Chief Sanquioni at spreading this financial burden out. Um, like he said, this is a yearly, uh, bill for us that hopefully we won't be able to, we won't have to come to you again. Um, it's going to be probably another two years. Again, though, like he said, this has been stretched out over some time to, um, kind of ease the financial burden. Uh, the tasers, um, I don't know how much we know about it. I'm not going to put anybody to sleep, but this is a level of force that we use, uh, a lot here in Milford. Uh, personally, as a supervisor, I've directed the use of taser, uh, for two people yielding knives. And think about that for two seconds, all right? So this is where taser was deployed. Um, these two people that had knives, one person had knives over two infants. This is not a tale. This is the truth. Uh, standing over two infants with a knife, threatening to kill both infants. Um, this person was successfully tasered. Uh, no shots were fired, and the person got the help that they needed that was in crisis, and the children were brought to a safe location. Um, and that's just, uh, a victory, um, that we can't even begin to talk about. So that's what taser allows us to do, and it's something that we use judiciously here in Milford. Uh, and I, um, request that you, uh, support this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Tassino. Uh, does any other voter care to be heard? Mister Visconti.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Mike Visconti, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight. Uh, just a quick question. Uh, years ago, the, the Police Department came to this body to replace cruises, to appropriate money to replace cruises. It was then determined at some point in time that that expense should be just included in the budget for a reoccurring expense to replace cruises. I'm wondering why, and I'm in favor of this article, by the way, but I, why would the reoccurring expense of so many phases each year not be included in the budget instead of coming to town meeting for an appropriation? Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Visconti. Mister Correa.
There's two legitimate questions that were just brought up. Number one, why is this not in the annual budget? Same with the fire tanks, for air tanks. Why are they not in the annual budget? Because they happen every eight years, ten years. So just replacing tasers for the sake of replacing tasers makes no sense. Luckily, we're in a strong enough financial position that we'll replace them when we need to, to support our police officers. So, Mike, that's why we don't put them in the budget every year, because it's only every eight years or so that we need to. The second thing is, why are we paying for them over four years? Because there's no penalty for paying for them over four years. Now, keep in mind, this town meeting cannot commit, and Dr. Moody, if I'm wrong, please correct me, this town meeting cannot commit actions of future town meetings. So the fact that we're buying these, this is what we did with the computers at the high school. We entered a three-year lease, knowing that we're counting on the goodwill of town meeting, that next year, when we come with money to do the second payment, the year after the third payment, that subsequent town meetings don't have to. They're not committed to, but they are. You can't give back used tasers.
Thank you, Mister Correa. Does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-five.
Mister Moderator, town meeting members. Mark Nelson, Precinct Seven. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eighty-three thousand dollars, said some to be spent under jurisdiction of the Fire Chief for the purchase of sixty-four air cylinders for self-contained breathing apparatus.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mister Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Chief Nelson.
Mister Moderator, town meeting members. Firefighters wear these self-contained breathing apparatus, incifiers, and oxygen-deficient atmospheres. Uh, breathing air cylinders are a vital part of this equipment, but they have a limit of fifteen years of use. Sixty-four cylinders are due to expire, and we're looking to replace these, and I urge your, your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Nelson. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor, excuse me, all those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-six. Mister Chrisifouli.
Mister Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to transfer from the excess and deficiency account the sum of three hundred and five thousand dollars to be, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the purpose of replacing loader number one with a new loader for snow plowing, snow removal, loading materials, stockpiling materials, and all the other day-to-day operations of the Highway Department.
Motion's been made and seconded that the town vote to transfer from the excess and deficiency account the sum of three hundred five thousand dollars, said some to be spent under the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the purpose of replacing loader number one with a new loader for snow plowing, snow removal, loading materials, stockpiling materials, and all other day-to-day operations of the Highway Department. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mister Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mister Chrisifouli.
Thank you.
Mister Moderator, town meeting members. Uh, for proof, this machine will be replacing a nineteen ninety-six Caterpillar front-end loader. The current loader is not roadworthy and is in need of costly repairs, including serious corrosion issues, uh, transmission electrical issues. The machine also ran out of large snowblow for snow removal operations, but is no longer able to do so. It would be cost prohibitive to try to make the machine usable for our needs. The new machine will be equipped with a front snowplow, side control wing, making the loader a very efficient snow plowing, uh, machine while eliminating the need for several plow contractors. It will also be set up to run our snowblower. I ask for your support on this article.
Thank you, Mister Chrisifouli. Does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion to, uh, transfer the amount of three hundred five thousand dollars. All those, uh, participating remotely may now vote. Yes. Uh, all those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-seven. Mister Chrisifouli.
Mister Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to transfer from the excess and deficiency, um, account a sum of money in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, said some to be spent on the jurisdiction of the Highway Surveyor for the purpose of engineering and design costs for the replacement of four hundred and fifty feet of deteriorating forty-eight inch pipe at Prospect Heights.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other voter, excuse me, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mister Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mister Chrisifouli.
Thank you, Mister Moderator. Um, Mister Moderator, town meeting members. The need for this article is for engineering costs associated with replacement of approximately four hundred and fifty feet of forty-eight inch rotted metal pipe. The pipe is a part of the hospital brook and runs from Prospect Heights to the State Pool property. Um, the Highway Department has been band-aiding the pipe and, um, over the years, and there's really not much more we can do, and it's becoming a very dangerous situation for the residents. Uh, it definitely needs to be repaired as soon as possible. Therefore, I ask you, I ask you to vote in favor of this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Chrisifouli. Does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely will now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-eight. Attorney O'Laughlin.
Mister Moderator, town meeting members. Excuse me. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, said some to be used for the purpose of providing audiovisual needs and conduct, to conduct, remote meetings for the remainder of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mister Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard?
Mister Moderator.
Attorney O'Laughlin.
Ladies and gentlemen, this article seeks the sum of fifteen thousand dollars to continue to be able to provide audio and visual needed for any remote meeting for the remainder of this present fiscal year. Uh, due to accommodations required by the COVID pandemic in two thousand and twenty, the IT Department was forced to look into remote town meeting scenarios. It was quickly determined that our audio capabilities were inadequate to provide the necessary level of effectiveness. To provide both, the town meeting members, our remote participants, and Milford TV with the quality sound input required. Additionally, our Zoom platform has a licensing cost for large meetings. Thanks to the CARES Act and FEMA funds for two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, we were able to cover the, these costs. The expectation in two thousand and twenty-two was that the pandemic would ease and town meetings would return to in-person scenarios. However, with the two thousand and twenty-two summer remote extensions, budgets for these expenses for FY twenty-three are now required. I urge your support of this article.
Thank you, Attorney O'Laughlin. Does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those voting remotely may do so now. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article thirty-nine. Attorney O'Laughlin.
Mister Moderator, town meeting members. I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of sixty thousand dollars to be utilized to upgrade the elevators at the police station, the fire station, and the Milford Youth Center.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mister Moderator, the Finance Committee votes favorably.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter, voter care to be heard?
Mister Moderator.
Attorney O'Laughlin.
This article seeks the sum of sixty thousand dollars to upgrade the elevators at the police station, fire station, and youth center. All three of these elevators have obsolete components that must be replaced to avoid future issues and unnecessary service interruptions. This is a cost-effective option compared to complete modernization and takes less time. The upgrade will include labor, materials, software, field engineering, and adjusting to assure the new system is completely interfaced, so the elevators can be placed back into service at peak performance the same day the upgrades are completed. I urge your support of this article.
Thank you, Attorney O'Laughlin. Any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely will now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article forty. Mister Taylor. Mr. Taylor.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of one million three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, said some to be added to the town's stabilization account.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Thank you. The Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Moderator. This amount was set back in February of this past year as part of the budgeting process. It was a goal for the year. I'm happy to report that we're able to meet this goal with your support tonight. You heard the Chairman of the Finance Committee's report at the beginning of this meeting. These amounts will be necessary for the next large bonding that this town encounters. It's part of our strategy for handling the, more than likely, the next school renovation. I urge your support in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. Article forty-one. Attorney Moody.
Mr. Moderator, Town Meeting Members, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to seek special legislation from the General Court validating the actions taken at the annual town meeting, which special legislation would provide substantially as follows. Being enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and the General Court assembled and by the authority of same as follows. Section one, notwithstanding any general or special law or bylaw to the contrary, all acts and proceedings taken by the Town of Milford at the annual town meeting held on May 23rd and 25th of 2022 are hereby ratified, validated, and confirmed to the same extent as if the meeting was held in full compliance with the law. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Motion's been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommendation is favorable. Any voter care to be heard? Mr. Moderator. Attorney Moody.
Yeah, ladies and gentlemen, this article is necessary because of the way that we handle the annual town meeting, in an effort to help people who may have felt in need or felt some particular fear. But the net effect was, from the Attorney General's perspective, is that we might have had what's called a hybrid meeting, partly remote and partly in person. The state law, for better or for worse, COVID notwithstanding, does not allow hybrid meetings. You either have to have a remote meeting completely, or you have to have an in-person meeting completely. The only differentiation is the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act can't allow us, in cases of legitimate disability and reason, to allow for an accommodation. And that's why you see the six people up there tonight. The problem at the annual town meeting was there were some thirty-seven people, and the Attorney General's Office has seriously questioned whether or not we handled it correctly. And they're reviewing it, and they may well disallow approval of the bylaws that we passed at the time, which would mean, in effect, that our town meeting action was invalid. This, I don't know what they're going to do. I've been in discussion with them. They haven't made a decision yet. If they make a decision that they'll let it go and not declare it invalid, then we won't need this article. But if they decide that, in fact, what we did was invalid, then we'll need this article. Since that time, we've worked with the Civil Rights Division of the Attorney General's Office and with the Mass Commission on Disability to develop the system we put in place now. And it's actually been used somewhat as a model across the state by other communities to make it work. So the Attorney General's Office is pleased with what we're doing now, but still questionable what we did last time. So please, I urge your support for this.
Thank you, Attorney Moody. Does any other voter care to be heard? If not, the question comes upon the motion as presented. All those were voting remotely may do so now. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Motion is carried unanimously. What is the pleasure of the meeting? Mrs. Fields. Motion's been made and seconded to dissolve the October 24th special town meeting warrant. All those in favor may now vote remotely for that. Do we have that slide? Okay. Hold on, folks, one second. We're still getting the slide prepared, so just everybody have a little patience. Go ahead. All those participating remotely may now vote. All those in favor will manifest by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Thank you. The warrant for the special town meeting is now closed. The monitors will please bring up their second attendance list. Thank you.